Smile.
Okay, guys, we have to start. Okay. We're gonna get started. Okay. Open session, call to order, flag salute. So let me look out into the audience and see who would be a good person to call on. I'm gonna call on Jake Manister, a truly great American to lead us in the flag salute, who left us five years ago, correct Jake?
Yes. Move to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Jake. Okay. Approval of the agenda, item five.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Spitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, no, it passes unanimously. Agenda hearing, period, public comment. Pam, do we have any? Oh, we have one, okay. Yesterday, last time we were here, we had none. That was a record first. Oh, okay, I'm calling up Marvin Wyman's Jr.
Yeah, I'm here. Is this thing on?
There we go.
Okay.
It's not plugged in.
Okay. Cause I'm here to demand a recount. I tried to make it a chance. It was a lot of things. For sure, I saw you out there. I don't know.
Hey, I won, I won fair and square.
No, I'm just kidding. I actually just wanted to make sure that on you guys' last day, I came to acknowledge you, to say how much, you know, you mean to me. When I decided to run, I was like, I knew that that would be two big shoes to fill. Way bigger than any shoe that I could fill. And hopefully Rochelle and Tristan can do their best job. You guys are really awesome people, and I'm not sure that the district knows exactly what they're losing when you guys walk away. And I'm sure there's contention, and people have different points of views all the time. But you, the character that you have, the passion, the clarity, the vision, you fight for what's right and what you believe in, and I appreciate it. I've got a chance to spend time with you. The knowledge base, Mr. Goldstein, is uncanny how smart you are, how you're able to attain, understand, and process information and then disseminate that information is unbelievable. And I think it should be studied, because I think you're that bright. And to Ms. Korbitov, you're fighting, the fight with Metro just shows me something more than a fight against Metro. You are selfishly caring for children that aren't yours. And to put yourself in harm's way, there are people that write things negatively about you, but you continue to fight. And you do it without a paycheck. You do it for the only benefit that, that, that will come is possibly the way you are going to feel knowing that other people's children are safe and that the district is better. So I appreciate both of you, and I just wanted to make sure, I thought we'd be celebrating with cake and ice cream, but I just wanted to make sure I came and told you both thank you for being who you are and making me feel like I was a part of this community from day one, and making me feel welcome. So two huge shoes to fill, and thank you for your sacrifice in your community.
Thank you Marvin. Thank you. I guess we're now at the consent calendar. Anything getting pulled?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, minus item 7C.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Goldstein. Okay, you. Yeah, all right, let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, no's? Okay, passes you well, unanimously, minus 7C.
Both Mr. Spitz and I pulled this. So I'll make a motion. What I'd like to do, well, let's see how we do this. Mr. Tau, quick question. Can I put the motion on the floor before making the amendment to the term? Or do I need to put it on the floor with the amended?
I think you're supposed to put it on.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve the NASDAQ contract with item 4.1 being two years and changing that to 18 months to coincide with the school year.
I'll accept the amendment.
Any discussion?
Yes. I have a question, I think for Dr. Braggy. This contract before us, I believe is about 115 pages of a legal document. Has one of the district attorneys seen this contract and approved it for form?
Absolutely.
Okay. I had a thought also, in general, about this. When, when the district's attorney looks at a contract that's gonna come before the board, and he approves it for form, it might be helpful if in that contract below it, it said approve for form, and then had the attorney's name on it. It would solve that. It would, it would answer that question. It's something you might.
And is that a request for all contracts moving forward?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, why not? Might consider it. Ask the attorney if it would be, if it would be appropriate, please. The other thing that I want to do about this, you know, this, this is a contract for providing armed security guards at our schools. I think, I think most everybody knows what we're talking about. And the cost is about a million dollars a year. And I just want to point out that the board has unanimously approved of this because of safety first. But I would like everybody to know, and the community to know, that this is being paid for out of reserves. This, we are operating at deficit, we're deficit spending, and this million dollars is coming out of reserves. So just to put some perspective to it, we started out this year with about $14 million of spendable reserves. Now, our total reserves are more, about 17 million, but certain portions of that can't be spent because there are minimum requirements, or they are items that are spoken for, reserved. So over the three-year period that, that our budget calls for, we start at 14 million of spendable reserves, and this item over the three years would bring it down to 11 million. So that's a reduction of over 20% of our reserves, just on this one item. And I bring that up, I think primarily to show the public how committed the board is to everything we can do for safety and security. Thank you.
Mr. Spitz, I inquired regarding the contract. It's my understanding that the amount placed in the contract is a placeholder for a PO, correct? It doesn't mean we will be expending that maximum amount every year. That depends on how we use the firm.
More discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, no's, passes unanimously. Congratulations, we actually have NASDAQ armed guards.
Full contact.
Full time. That's an accomplishment. Okay. Moving on, item eight, professional and official business. Eight A.
Is there a presentation on that, or?
Is it just information?
No, I thought you were going to take care of this one.
Hello, Board. Mr. Goldstein, Ms. Korbitov, thank you again. I'll reiterate, Mr. Wyman said, "Thank you for your service. We appreciate everything you've done over the years for the school district." And as the president of BHGF, it's been my distinct honor to get to work with you, and, and I really appreciate it. So thank you. So we're before you this evening because there have been two naming opportunities that have come to our attention, that we are now presenting to you, the board, to consider. The music, let me see if I can find the exact, the Music Industry Center, an anonymous donor came to us wishing to name that. It wasn't on the list of previously approved namings that was passed by the board in December of 2013, so we come before you today to see if we can get your approval for that to be named. It is one of the, the rooms have been given to you during the meeting specifically laid out. It's one room, and then two smaller rooms on each side. We, in speaking with the donor, and with Ms. Dubin, who has also spoken with the donor, looked at what's previously been set aside for namings for comparable rooms, and have come up with the dollar amount of $50,000 for that naming. And so we're asking that you will consider that and allow us to move forward with that opportunity. The second one is another naming of the mural at El Rodeo. We've been approached by a group who have some funds, and they would like the opportunity to name that as well. And it hasn't been previously put on as an item that can be named. So that's why we come before you. $30,000. It's in front of the, yes, the auditorium where the benches are.
I would move approval of the addendum to the naming opportunities. That's the next item that she was speaking to.
Okay, well, let's, we can actually.
You wanna combine the two?
Yeah, let's make a motion to approve the addendum to the naming opportunities, item 8B, the approval of the pledge agreement for the class of 2018, 8C, and the approval of the pledge agreement for the Music Industry Center, 8D.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, no's? Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
And thank you to your donors.
Thank you to the donors.
Mrs. Korbitov?
Yes.
With regard to the naming opportunities, I would like to make one comment. I notice that for naming trees, depending on the size of the tree, that the, the cost is as little as $1,000. And that includes, of course, placing a permanent outdoor plaque. It seems to me that it gets pretty close to a wash, and I would suggest that that amount be increased to 2,000 or 3,000.
Okay, so.
It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, so. I would, that list was done in 2013. Maybe the whole list should be looked at again, Cindy and, and Dr. Braggy?
We actually, Dr. Braggy and I have had conversations, and we do know that across the district, there have been a number of changes with construction coming up at the high school, certainly at El Rodeo, that there's going to be a need for us to go to each individual site and look at what is still at the school and available for naming, and what's coming. So we're aware that there does need to be a revisiting of the items that are available for naming, as there will be new items that we can add to the list in the future, so.
So in particular, the trees is a good example. Have you been looking at the trees?
We will look at the trees when we get to each site, because some of them may have grown since the last time they were on the list, but we will be very happy to assess the benches, the trees, and all other opportunities that are there to be named.
Yeah, I think saplings can get $1,000, but that's it.
All right, we took the go, correct?
Okay, thank you.
We're done, all right. Item nine, human resources. Dr. Braggy?
So we'd like to recommend at this time to the Board of Education, two contracts for two cabinet positions, Assistant Superintendent for Education Services, Dustin Seaman, and Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Laura Chisholm. The assistant superintendent positions, the term is a two-year contract. The salary is to be paid to each of the executives. It's $187,200 for the next school year, the following schooling year, it's $194,688. The other elements of compensation are the auto allowance for $250 a month, cellphone allowance for $150 a month, one-time payment of $10,000 to be paid after June 30th of 2020, and then one-time payment of $10,000 to be paid after June of 2021, and the entitled health and welfare benefits applicable to all the 12-month certificated employees here in the district.
Thank you. Questions, anyone? No?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for employment of Assistant Superintendent Ed Services, and a motion to approve the agreement for employment of Assistant Superintendent Student Services.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yeah, actually, I think.
Any discussion on this?
I think, cause I saw some faces in the audience when those dollar amounts were indicated for salary. And just know, there's, you can go on EdJoin and see what other positions of similar nature are going for, and it varies between 156 to 175 as low range, about 178 to about 200 to 12, and then about 215 to 240. So with regard to these salaries, they're truly appropriately priced, given the amount of work that these two individuals do on a daily basis, and with reconfiguration looming next year and everything else, considering that this district back in 2008 cut staff at the district office tremendously. In other districts our size, they would have assistants, they would have two or three people working under them. They don't, they do everything, there are chief dishpan and bottle washers around here. And because of that, we would pay much more if we had additional people that would be support services for them. So I think it's important that you understand that, and just how many hours they put and dedicate to this district on our children's behalf.
With that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, no's? Carries unanimously, congratulations. Item 10, facilities. Dawn, Jeff, I don't know if we need you up there, but.
Information only, so.
Oh, it's all information only?
One is, one is, so I don't know.
Okay, information only, El Rodeo School.
Is there a presentation on that, on the information only?
No, okay. So then, nothing to vote on, on that one. Adoption of resolution, 10B.
So I will make a motion. Where, is there a resolution to read here, or just an amendment?
Is there any resolution to read, folks?
There just should be an amendment, right?
No, the resolution's in there.
It's in there?
Do you have it?
I don't know. Wait.
Yeah, we're trying to, trying to find it.
Is it in there?
I'm gonna pull it up.
Do you have a copy? I don't have a copy. Is this, is it, does it start with on November 14th, or that's just the rationale? That's the rationale? Okay. Thanks Pam. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, amendment number three, to the lease-leaseback agreement with Pro West for the modernization at Beverly Hills High School.
You want me to read it? Yeah? Do we have to read it? I don't think so. Do I have to read this one?
This is an amendment to this resolution, so we approve it.
It's not like board policies, right? Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, no? Okay, passes unanimously. Right? That's it? Okay.
So I'll make a motion for the approval of the professional services agreement with SVA Architects for the BVADA ramp redesign project.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Goldstein. Discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Ah. Item 11, board organization action.
I guess I will take it from here.
Yeah.
Mister, do I wanna, oh, no, 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 no. Mr. Goldstein, we'll start with you. Cause we should end, we should end with, with the president. I think that would be most appropriate. So there's nothing official done for just board members that are leaving. It's only for the president, that's what all this is for. That's what all these party gifts, this plethora of Home Shopping Network stuff is here. But Howard, when I, when I first ran into you several years ago, right outside this building, we chatted probably about the PTA issues, and then I quickly learned of our six degrees of Oregon connection. I believe I had recently been elected to my first term and was most likely trying to coax you into running for the board in 2013. I didn't expect you to be that gullible. Therefore, I am deeply sorry for the inconvenience I may have caused you and your family for the past five years. That's a half a decade, Howard, a twentieth of a century. No matter how you frame it, it is five years of public service. My God, man, what were you thinking? When you look back at what you set out to accomplish and what you leave behind, you can rest assured that your not-so-brief time on this merry-go-round, or just go-round, was well-spent. You oversaw significant changes and improvements with educational programs. You witnessed a school being built and others now in progress. You advocated for student safety and campus security, but most of all, you were optimistic. You came to the job with a smile, knowing that things do work out when students become the focus of the discussion. It has been a pleasure serving with you, and I look forward to your continued edification, whether I like it or not. Thank you. This is a small token, you can open it and read it. This is from your colleagues and Dr. Braggy.
Oh, thank you for those very kind thoughts.
Sure, there's only a room full of hungry people here, take your time.
I remember a day that these meetings used to start at seven, or they're supposed to start at seven, they sometimes started at nine o'clock.
Your mic, your mic.
It's on. It's still. All right, everyone, can you hear me? All right. So I remember a day, these meetings. Yeah, I know, hurry it up. Oh, I have to put on my glasses. These meetings used to start at seven, and we didn't get out till the next day at times. Mr. Manister recalls those. This is from the board and Dr. Braggy. On behalf of the Board of Directors at Tower Cancer Research Foundation, we would like to thank you for your generous contribution of $180 in honor of BHHS soccer charity event. To achieve our mission, we depend on generous support from individuals like you. We are grateful for your generosity and hope you take great pride in the important difference your gift makes. Thank you very much, in honor of Howard Goldstein. Very, very thoughtful. Which leads me, this Saturday at 2:00 PM, you can come to the Cancer Foundation Research charitable event. I believe the preliminaries start at 2:00 PM, and the actual game starts at 3:00, so please come, enjoy, spend some money, and donate. And if I may, take the liberty of making a few comments, and I know, it's only 5:30, we have time, get comfortable. I've been here five years. Some of you I've never seen before. All right. Where to begin? Well, first, it's hard to believe that it's been five years that have passed since I first commenced my term as a governing board member. It's been an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to serve this community. When I started my term in 2013, I found a district besieged with corruption and lawsuits, a former superintendent convicted of misappropriation of public funds, a former facilities manager that had violated state conflict of interest statutes, and was suing the district for millions of dollars, administrators alleging a hostile work environment, multiple employment lawsuits against the district, stagnant education programs, employees that had not seen a substantial increase in salary and benefits in years. We had no district technology plan, a construction program that was stalled, and insufficient bond funds to complete the projects that were started. Five years later, I am proud to say that my time on the board has not been spent waiting for the storm to pass, but rather, I learned very quickly to dance in the rain. From the moment that I took my oath of office, I advocated for programs and positions that would pave the way for a revitalized school district. A few of those positions and programs were a dedicated counselor of college admissions, a director of technology to facilitate district-wide one-to-one technology implementation, a career technical education program, and we have Ms. Dubin here who runs it and does a tremendous job to explore alternative A through G college readiness offerings and enhance career pathways. The reinstatement of the gate program. Am I gonna leave anything for you? You, you did plenty in your four years before me. Programs that focused on placing more girls into the subjects of science, technology, engineering, and math, resurrected a district facilities program that would see the construction of a new Horace Mann campus, environmental abatement of asbestos-led paint-led pipes from the original 1920s Horace Mann, El Rodeo, and high school classroom buildings, managed the passage of a new school construction bond, measure BH, decommissioning of oil wells at the high school, negotiated with the city for an increase in the base amount of the joint powers agreement, development of a comprehensive school security plan, including an armed presence during school hours, closed campuses at all five school sites, and a planned fusion center to measure internal and external threats. Worked for the city to restore the school resource officer program, the SRO program. As a sidebar, I'm pleased to hear, starting next school year, the As a sidebar, I'm pleased to hear, starting next school year, the BHPD may deploy a dedicated SRO at the high school and at Beverly Vista, with another SRO roaming between Hawthorne and Horace Mann. I call on the brethren at the city to continue to work with the district so that all BHUSD campuses have one full-time SRO officer at each campus to supplement our district's security program. We sustained the litigation against Karen Christensen that ultimately saw the reversal of a $20 million judgment against this district and consistently challenging Metro to do the right thing to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff at BHHS. No longer would we allow the proverbial "can" to be kicked down the road with regard to our pension liabilities. We prefunded our other post-employee benefits in order to significantly lower the cost and bring fiscal sustainability to our pension liabilities. In each of the five years that I have served on the Board, our state-certified auditors have confirmed an increase to the district's ending fund balance. I am proud to say that I leave the district in a much stronger financial condition than I found it. No wonder I'm so tired. We did a lot of work in those five years. On this evening, I'm reminded of a recent political survey ranking the U.S. presidents. At the top of the list stood Abraham Lincoln. Had the country been asked to rank President Lincoln's service in the spring of 1863, there would be no doubt that public support for Mr. Lincoln would be lacking, and he would rank very low on that list. I mention President Lincoln to highlight that. The moment at hand rarely completes the full picture. It is not lost on me that one board member cannot accomplish anything alone. The colleagues that I have worked with on each Board are ordinary citizens, albeit extraordinary dedication to our community and our children. We are your friends, we are your neighbors, we are parents and grandparents, we volunteer hundreds of hours and take time away from our families to do this job, on your behalf and your children's behalf. I've been very fortunate to spend five years with colleagues that advocated for what was right, what was just, and at any given time, what they believed was necessary to move this district forward. Melon Isabel, I appreciate your passion for governance, your ability to bring process and procedure to the district where none existed before, and I thank you for that. Lisa Noah, at times, we were called the Board Majority. On occasion, we were called the Voice of Reason. Sometimes, we were called worse. Irrespective of what we were called, I am proud to have had the opportunity to serve with the two of you. Lisa, as outgoing Board President, I must say, when I first got onto the Board, you were definitely as advertised. Opinionated, headstrong, and possessed a singularity of purpose. You have not changed. Although over the years, you have developed into a very accomplished school trustee. You always took the lead when it came to advocating for student achievement and safety. Most importantly, you showed compassion to those that came before this chamber. Many times after Board meetings, I would come home and ask Julie what she thought of my comments on any issue, that issue, this issue. Without fail, Julie would respond, "My comments were good, but that Lisa's comments were better."[813.51][813.51](LAUGHTER). That Lisa's comments were poignant, reflective, heartfelt, and compassionate. Only a wife can tell you the truth. Throughout your nine years on the Board, your contributions to this district have been invaluable. Your observations were always thoughtful, your attention to detail was unparalleled. You will be greatly missed by this governing Board and this district. I also want to thank the citizens of Beverly Hills who placed their trust in me to act in the best interest of our students. Whether you agreed or disagreed with my decisions, know that I took my responsibility seriously and always attempted to repay your trust with thoughtful and meaningful decision-making. To the many teachers, administrators, staff, and parents that have shared with me their ideas, whether solicited or not, it was always valued, and please know that your comments do not fall on deaf ears. As I leave office, I am extremely optimistic about the future of our public schools, due in part to one constant, the quality of its families. Our students are among the brightest and most eager to learn in any district. They have parents that care deeply about education, and many have made great sacrifices to send their children to our public schools. I could not have done this work alone. I am deeply grateful for my wife Juliette, who's sitting right there with a big smile on her face because she gets me back.[901.31][901.31](APPLAUSE). And grateful for my sons Gabe and Ian for the sacrifices they have made each and every day that enabled me to volunteer my time to this district.[914.04][914.04](APPLAUSE). Juliette, I've always cherished your intellect, your passion, and dedication to teaching. It is what inspired me to become so engaged in public education. Together, we have raised two wonderful boys, and it's due to your love and commitment to them that they turned out to be amazing young men. To my sons Gabe and Ian, you have spent your childhood sharing me with the public. I recognize this as men sacrificing our time together, and for that, I'm forever in your debt. I will leave you both, I will leave you with these final words. My time on the Board can best be summarized by the motto of the high school, "Today well-lived." Taken from the Sanskrit proverb, "Yesterday is a dream, tomorrow but a vision," but "today well-lived" makes every yesterday a dream of happiness and every tomorrow a vision of hope. Thank you.[974.25][974.25](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Ms. Korbitov, we have a resolution here. I will need a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution.
I'll move to approve the resolution. The resolution? How's that? And if I don't, you keep her?
Can I get a second?
I'm going home.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Goldstein, seconded by Ms. Hacker. I will read this and then we will dispense with the objects here. Whereas Lisa Korbitov has served as President of the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education from December 2017 to December 2018, and whereas she energetically and wholeheartedly supported a comprehensive K-12 educational audit to evaluate our district curriculum, and whereas she has unselfishly devoted an extensive amount of time and personal resources defending our only high school against Metro's planned subway tunnels, and whereas she has been a relentless advocate for making decisions that provide the highest level of campus safety and security at each BHUSD school, and whereas she supported clear standards for student performances and supporting staff in obtaining competitive collective bargaining contracts, and whereas she has played a key role in supporting the passage of the Measure BH building campaign. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Board of Education does hereby honor Lisa Korbitov for her distinguished leadership and outstanding service on behalf of the students and staff of the Beverly Hills Unified School District this fourth day of December 2018.
Thank you.[1091.08][1091.08](APPLAUSE).
Okay. You can vote on the resolution and then I'll give you stuff. So I'll call to... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Thank you. And with that, you now get the salad shooter.
Oh, there it is.
Okay. We have for you...
Salad shooter.[1113.71][1113.71](LAUGHTER).
I feel like Johnny Carson here. Here is a framed copy of that wonderful resolution. Here is the, I believe, your second gavel plaque.
Yes.
Iggy, you're happy to know that the gavel is attached, so you're safe.[1135.65][1135.65](LAUGHTER). That's for you.
Thank you.
And we have one of these from your colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you. So generous, thank you.
And then, before I present this, I just wanted to say a couple of words and then you can do your thing. Lisa, what can I say? We have gone from toe-to-toe and head-to-head to, more recently, eye-to-eye. It is no surprise that Mrs. Korbitov and I started out on rocky ground for several years, but I will not dwell on that. Instead, I am proud to say that despite our differences, we have had many heart-to-hearts. Okay, and that's it for the physiology. And we have been able to work together well for quite a while now. Serving nine years is quite an accomplishment, I will let you know in two. Three years more than some senators, four years more than even Mr. Goldstein, but who's counting? Lisa and I first met at a coffee being thrown at my then neighbor's house. The house is still there, the neighbor isn't. She was a staunch advocate of clean schools, safe campuses, and better educational opportunities. That was, of course, until the train left the station. Since 2010, Lisa has been this community's foremost chink in Metro's armor. And while leading the charge to protect our campus, she never said not to build the subway just to put the tunnels anywhere else but under our instructional buildings. So Lisa, on behalf of a grateful and sometimes ungrateful community, thank you for at least taking a stand. It is an example of your indomitable American spirit. And with that, I got you a special little gift. This is a tap card from Metro.[1246.92][1246.92](LAUGHTER). And it says, "In case of emergency, like Metro moving the route to Santa Monica, break glass."[1256.36][1256.36](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Wow. How do I follow that up? In the first place, God made idiots. That was for practice. Then He made school boards. Mark Twain said that, doozy, and there might be some merit to his observations. Sometimes you run to highlight an issue. I did when I ran nine-plus years ago. I was appalled at the condition of our schools. They had a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance and frankly, weren't very clean. I think much has improved in some respects and not enough in other respects. But ultimately, my running in 2009 is because I wanted to commit my time and energy to public service and to tell the greater community that I cared and I wanted to make a difference. I sacrificed a lot of time and effort, and I did it all willingly on behalf of others, and that is what I think is the hallmark of true and meaningful public service. Abraham Lincoln said, "Characters like a tree and reputation like a shadow. The shadow is what we think of it, the tree is the real thing." I am proud of my service to this community and believe that with always a Board Majority and many different Board members, I've made a difference for our staff and community, but most profoundly for our students. I've always voted my hopes and aspirations and not my fears and admonitions. A wise friend once told me that the single greatest problem in education at all levels is when adults make decisions in the best interests of other adults and not in the best interests of their students. I can honestly say that not ever, and not knowingly, have I ever taken a vote or supported initiative or program that I did not think was in the best interests of our students and/or our educational outcome. I've learned to stay in my lane. That took a while. When you first arrive here, you might not understand your role, but ultimately, the Board legislates and sets policy, and you are held responsible alongside the superintendent for the outcomes of these decisions and policies. But the work has to get done by those hired to do the work. Right, Noah? Okay. There is a learning curve for Board members. That was mine. The worst aspect of my years of service here has been the constant effort by some current and some former elected officials in the city and outside our city to distort, demean, and defame my efforts as an elected member of the school board. Criticism of policy decisions by elected officials is part of our system. That's okay with me. What is not okay is the constant attacks on me personally in order to overturn, obstruct, and stop good and proper decisions I've made along with the majority of the school boards I've served with. So I want to take this time to correct for the record what my votes and actions have meant for our school district. This is the last time I'm going to publicly speak about this, thankfully. Apparently, from the disparaging comments I have received, my greatest sin has been to try to prevent LA Metro from putting two tunnels barely 45 feet right underneath our main high school building. This is the last time I will talk about this to all of you, and this has been a huge and difficult part of my two terms on school board. I have never wanted this struggle, neither has the city or the district, but I felt that it was my duty to work as hard as I could to maximize our odds of having a better outcome, if not an outright victory. This was a bait and switch, pulled on the entire city, but it became the burden of the school board in 2010 to resist endangering our students, teachers, staff, and parents. What did we fight against? Metro decided to route their subway right under our main buildings, our instructional buildings, the old 1928 buildings just next door, and dig two tunnels, electrify tunnels barely 45 feet beneath the nearly 100-year-old foundations of our main buildings. To put this into perspective, from where I'm sitting now to the back of this room is about the same distance. In between and all around, like where all of you are sitting, are dozens of old abandoned oil wells punched through one of the highest-concentration methane gas fields in California. We're sitting on top of hundreds of barrels of oil and tens of thousands of cubic feet of natural gas. Right now, this minute, still Metro's determined to put their two electrified tunnels right in, right through all of this. I see the drilling bits of their diamond-dipped tipped steel drills hitting pockets of methane, grinding through rocks and sparking against old five-inch and larger drill pipes buried all around our campus. That's not hyperbole, that's accurate. To me, that is not just dangerous, but quite frankly, insane. So have I committed the sin of using every means at my disposal to fight to save our students, parents, staff from exposure to the unprecedented tunneling? Yet that has been the main attack on me, that I have fought and joined others on our school boards to keep up the fight. Criticism of me has ranged from spending too much money, to why don't you just try to settle, to why are you scaring people? Money. More than half of it went to hiring geologists and digging trenches to prove our high school is not sitting on an active earthquake fault. Why did we have to do that? Because Metro reported to the world that we were on an active fault, actually, three, so that we could call our campus uninhabitable, impaired. If they did that, our campus would be deemed so dangerous, we would have to abandon it or at least great portions of it, and let Metro tunnel to their hearts' content. Metro then inferred more fake faults under Elrodeo. We had to hire the same people and follow the similar procedures to free Elrodeo from being deemed uninhabitable due to active earthquake faults. Thankfully, we prevailed with both campuses, and there are no active earthquake faults. You can't win any war if you don't pay for the troops. So we spent the money for our defense and proved we are not sitting on any active faults anywhere. We spent that money in defense of our only high school in Elrodeo and not for any other reason. We were forced into spending the money, and I have no apologies for our successful defense of these two campuses. Next, why didn't we settle? We tried, and tried, and tried. Throughout Metro, pretty much played us, laughed at us. Never once in any of our several settlement conferences and mediations did Metro even consider moving their subway out from under our only high school more than a foot. Never, not once. We tried and they refused. In addition to our efforts in court, at my own expense, I have made nearly a dozen trips to Washington, D.C. to lobby to make sure the powers that be know of our plight. I have succeeded. I have worked tirelessly and asked for nothing in return. I felt it was my job, and I took this mission very seriously, and I have never figured out why there is a noisy and nasty minority of naysayers that want our defense to fail. Ask yourselves why. I really don't have an answer. Why would any rational person believe that two electrified, oxygenated tunnels barely 45 feet under a public high school full of kids and teachers dug through an oil and gas field is a good thing? The risks are real, the danger extreme, and explosion is potentially easy to set off with so much natural gas in the ground, and the damage and loss of life would be devastating. So why? Why do this? And to add insult to injury, LA Metro, without regard to student safety and health and well-being, has moved all staging to our fence line. Don't let anyone normalize this for you because it's bad for our school and district and city. For those that wonder why I've always been outspoken and told the truth about the dangers and risks with this reckless route under the high school and now the egregiously closed staging area, it's simple. It's your right to know what risks are being imposed on your children. I've always said publicly that no government agency has the right to impose a risk on other people's children. That includes sitting Board members that must give full disclosures. I've advocated for transparency and dialogue with experts and sharing information in real time with you all. The future Board is cognizant of the necessity to plan for moving students out of harm's way if it becomes necessary. We've traced the origins of the plan to Century City real estate developers and LA-elected officials. Beverly Hills High was simply in the way and had to be dealt with. Sadly, they recruited a number... Sadly, they recruited a number of our own Beverly Hills officials to join them, harass our school boards, and attack me personally. I will never apologize for defending our school district, this high school, our children, parents, teacher, and staff. To report on where we are in our legal efforts to force Metro to obey federal and state law, this is where we are today. While contrary to some former school board members and former mayors and other loud voices, we are still standing, and the tunnels are not under us. The federal court has found that Metro has not obeyed federal law and has ordered corrective action. We are still in the fight. It is not over. As of today, Metro does not even have the legal right to tunnel underneath our high school, although they will certainly try to get it. We have not lost. We need not preemptively surrender. Let me turn to finances. The claim has been made at various times that our district is financially nearing insolvency. Not one word of that is true. By law, our budgets must show that we are solvent, that we are not in deficit, and that we can pay our bills. This board must submit its annual budget to the L.A. County Office of Education every year to verify that we are financially okay. That is exactly what we’ve done every year that I’ve served, but let’s go back to when I started in 2009. When I arrived in December of 2009, we were in the deepest recession and suffering through the deepest cuts to public education in the history of the state of California. We budgeted through that disaster and came out okay. We did not have a deficit. During my time in office, we negotiated the largest JPA Joint Powers Agreement with the city council in the history of this district, not once but twice. In litigation, contrary to some, Lisa’s losing lawsuits? Not quite. When I came on the board, we were facing a lawsuit from a contractor who ultimately sued the district for over $22 million. Karen Christensen, the contractor, has been removed as the main contractor for Measurie Bonds when I arrived. She sued us, many said settle. I got my first round of attacks for hiring top-notch lawyers to defend our district. Ultimately, we’ve won that litigation. Christensen actually won her $22 million judgment at the trial court. We appealed and won the appeal. The effort cost us about $3 million in legal fees to defeat her claim. In the process, we uncovered improper conduct, received the largest financial settlement in district history, $6.65 million from Johnson Controls Corporation for misrepresentation on a facilities contract that was part of the same dealings. So we actually had a net profit of over $3 million when the dust settled. Still, many in this city said the board had squandered district money on legal fees. I was blamed because I recommended and identified the law firms, Quinn Emanuel Erkhart for the first trial, then Fred Fenster of Greenberg, Lesk, Horvitz &amp; Levy as appellate counsel, and these two firms who finally won the case. As for oil and gas drilling, I voted to end the oil lease and drilling at Beverly Hills High School and implemented a multi-phase capping and plugging plan with full remediation as the end goal, complete decommissioning and complete abatement of the nineteen oil heads in the rear of the campus. For special needs students, we were the first district in the state of California to remove the harmful term label retardation and replace with developmentally disabled for our students who are special needs in this regard. I am proud to say Dave Jackson is here. I introduced Dave Jackson to the prior board, former principal of Beverly Hills High School to our district, and he led the charge. I led the charge for his hiring as our principal, and I want to say that he turned the place around. We should be in his debt. He rescued us. Thank you, Dave. We suffered no deficit spending in any of my nine years on this board. Instead, during my tenure, we started with zero reserves and now have ending fund balances of nearly $17 million. We established pre-funding of OPEB to lower district pension liabilities, paid down on two fiscal years, and established the practice of paying down this obligation annually. We ended the destabilizing practice of laying off teachers as a tool to balance our budget. Howard and I identified problems and practices of the first construction management company two years before three other members would give a vote to end that association and look for a replacement, but thankfully, they did. The replacement was brought to us by an attorney with decades of experience working with Don Blake. We hired Don Blake and a stellar team to build out our district projects listed in Measurie and Measurie BH. Instrumental also, thanks to Don and others, is the hiring of I-0, and they created a comprehensive school safety and security plan with measurable assessments and action plan. We have a granular plan for physical upgrades to safety and hardening the campuses to intruders, creating a security plan of limited ingress and egress onto all of our campuses with unarmed and armed guards stationed strategically at all five campuses. I feel grateful to have met Nasdaq through a community member and introduced them to the district, a premier security company with a stellar reputation and decades of experience guarding schools and high-target Jewish locations. BHPD and Nasdaq and I-0 have worked collaboratively together for months to create the highest level of security our district has ever known. I supported Measure Y and Measure BH, which passed and will fulfill the mandate to rebuild most of our school district. I am not going to read all other accomplishments. There are nineteen. There is no reason. Much of it was reported by the Courier. I’m going to end with this. I am proud of all this work, which I didn’t mention all of it. I was able to do collaboratively over the past nine years and feel the district will continue to distinguish itself academically. I am proud of my work to safeguard this campus with the help of the nation’s top lawyers and experts. Thank you to Terri Tau and Jabari Willis and Jennifer Racine and Clarin Nardi Riddle and former Senator Joseph Lieberman and Gail Connors, Fred Fenster and Barry Levy. Thank you to the Beverly Hills Courier for reporting the news. Thank you to Cliff Smith, the former publisher, and Marsha Hobbs, the current publisher, both trusted friends and BHUSD well wishers. Thank you Laura Coleman for reporting the news with heart. I want to thank tonight a few people I’ve worked with over the past years. It’s fitting to start with fellow board members. Dr. Brian Goldberg, Jake Manister, Louis Hall, and of course, current board members Noah Margot, who I’ve sat with for seven years and have grown closer to over the last few years. Noah and I have enjoyed your wit and good humor in tough moments. I have appreciated your steady hand and constant reminders to follow process and that the board let the administrative team and superintendent actually run this district. You were right, and I’m so hopeful for your presidency on this board a second time around. Your leadership will be outstanding and measured as always. Howard Goldstein, I want to say a few things about Howard. He’s leaving tonight as well. I have come to know Howard in these last five years. I feel like I’ve known him forever. He’s an extremely kind and decent man and smart. He’s the smart member, right Marvin? And principled and fair. He cares about others, and it shows in words and more profoundly in his deeds. I’m grateful for his friendship and support and guidance at many junctures. He is always a voice of reason. Howard and I usually arrive at the same conclusions but take a different path to get there. I’ve always sought Howard’s advice because he always puts students first, and that is the only litmus test one need to apply to a fellow board member. During tough meetings, Howard would lean over and joke with me, “Is it December yet?” “Yes, Howard, it is December 4th, and here we are saying our goodbyes.” But Howard is special and has been a tremendous volunteer for our district, and I know he won’t go far and stay away for too long. He is just too good for that. I want to thank Mel Spitz. I think, Mel, this is your 12th year of service if you combine the years, correct? Wow. Amazing. Longest-serving school board member, I think, in our history. And Isabel Hacker for their dedication and hard work on this board. They have cared very deeply about the challenges facing our district as well as the solutions and opportunities that are within their reach. I wish them and their new board only the very best. I welcome Tristan Walker Schuman and Rochelle Marcus as new board members. I am so optimistic for their contributions to our community. I want to mention former Superintendent Gary Woods, who was a decent and kind man and worked hard and stabilized BHUSD while he was here for four years. I want to thank Dr. Bregge for his endless hours of hard work and dedication and quick wit. Irrespective of our occasional differences, I’ve enjoyed our time together, and I will miss you eventually. Thank you for your passion and energies regarding the metro issue and the other big issues that face our district. I know you will succeed at anything you put your mind to, and I can’t wait to see and read about all the new and exciting things you and your team will implement at our district in the years to come. To Sean Tubey and to Ryan Abershami, who may not be here, you guys are the future, and it is bright. And thank you for your wonderful advice, your cogent, thoughtful ideas, your wisdom from the mouths of babes, and for your energy to protect this campus and your fellow students and your leadership. Thank you. And I can’t wait, okay. Let’s see. Latonya, what can I say? You got here right before I did. That makes us old timers. Thank you for your constant help and dedication and devotion to this district. You have worn too many hats to count, and each one fit like a crown. Thank you Pam Kraushaar. Pam, the glue around here, and I’m the only one that can pronounce her name properly from day one. I actually asked her how to say it. Pam, you are always a calming presence and one of the best of anything or anyone I have ever encountered in my last nine years here. I am so happy to have gotten to know Laura Chisholm and Dustin Seaman and Luke Pavone. Keep up the good work. I want to say thank you to our stellar IT team led by Bernadette Lucas and her team. Thank you to Anthony and Karthik and Eddie and Christie. To the M&amp;O team, you make everything work around here, the unsung heroes. Gino Garcia, my buddy, and Hosea, and all the men and women who keep BHUSD working day in and day out. I want to thank the custodians, most of you, and food service workers who work very hard on behalf of our students. Thank you to Chris Hertz and our security team and Nasdaq and I-0 and everyone who shows up every school day to protect our students and faculty. I want to thank the special ed team, Karen Garland, Carrie Marlowe, and Jeannie Davis. To Don Blake and his team, Jeff and Stacy and Pam and Shirley, thank you from the bottom of my heart for rescuing us from ourselves and giving us the vision of what a beautiful tomorrow will look like. Thank you Jeff Rising and Dan for building it. Thank you for building our tomorrow’s Pro West. I want to thank all our principals and administration at the five school sites in Moreno for your service to our children. You are all doing God’s work. Thank you to the stellar PTA leaders and BHEF trailblazers. You are so critical to our success and part of the fabric of our district. To the members of the Citizens Oversight Committee, thank you for your service for so many years. Thank you to, thank you, thank you for your service for so many years, really a critical function for the well-being of our bond measures and construction program. Thank you to the Finance Committee for your donation of time and effort and wisdom. But my biggest thank you, my biggest thank you among the BHUSD family reserve for the lifeblood, our teachers and support staff. Henry Adams said, “A teacher affects eternity. He can never tell where his influence ends.” I want to thank all of you who have supported my candidacy and helped me along the way. I am honored and humbled by your support and friendship. I want to thank my husband for his unwavering support, patience, and wise counsel during these last nine-plus years. He is really the best friend I could have ever asked for. My greatest debt is indeed owed to my family, my husband, Iggy, and my three daughters, Lauren and Elizabeth and Annabella, who’s not here. My sacrifice was their sacrifice as well, although mine was voluntary, theirs was not. I want to thank my parents, my mom is here, for everything they’ve ever done for me, and whatever good I am is to their credit. I stand by my record. I’m proud of the accomplishments of the school boards I’ve served and that I’ve helped to achieve. I remain proud of our district, our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff, and our community. Whenever I felt down, I read this one passage, and I’ll close with it. I leave you with the eloquence of our remarkable President Teddy Roosevelt. Quote, “It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither knew victory nor defeat.” Thank you.
Just a few comments. Mrs. Korbatov and Mr. Goldstein, again, thank you so much. It’s been six months since I came on here this past June, and I think these six months have been by far the most impactful and the most I’ve grown in the now eighteen years of my life. So even by speaking with you whenever I get the time, I’ve learned so much about really the organizational standpoint, about how things run. And I really admire the tenacity and persistence that both of you embody. So just for all that I’ve learned from both of you, just want to say thank you.
Mrs. Korbatov, there’ve been a lot of speech-making tonight, and I’ll keep it brief. I think that the passions of these two people that are leaving this board are pretty obvious, pretty obvious. And I think, I feel like assuring them that as we look ahead with our new board and the plans that we have, the plans that are underfoot, I think will make you proud.
I agree.
And I think that knowing you, knowing you both as public servants, unlike the old soldier, I don’t think you’ll fade away, and I’m glad for that. Good luck.
So Mrs. Korbatov and Mr. Goldstein, I think I can say, and I can speak for the board, when I say that public service is not a walk in the park and that public service requires a considerable amount of time. And I think both of you have been witnesses to that and have lived through that. So I thank you for your service, and I want to wish you well.
I said my piece already. I think Dr. Bregge.
So only a few people truly know how difficult it is to be an elected official, especially an elected official on a school board. There are no other volunteer opportunities that I can think of that can be described as highly unpredictable, high stress, and also high emotion. Don’t get me wrong, there are some days when I saw both of you and I wanted to run the other direction. But most days, when we worked together, it was a congratulatory hug or handshake. On most days, I couldn’t wait to roll up my shirt sleeves and work together side by side with both of you. Our work together has been the toughest assignments of my entire life, but I feel very fortunate that we had this time to work together. Howard, I’ve had probably thirty board members in my career. You are the most approachable board member that I’ve ever worked with. The time that you’ve spent with me in sharing the BHUSD history has been an invaluable opportunity for me, and I will never forget the countless hours that you made yourself available to me to get me up to speed, and that your advice and your suggestions were always solid, and I appreciate your encouragement to make my own recommendations as a superintendent. Lisa, you are the definition of perseverance, and you have shown the community a unique blend of grit and passion during the last nine years, and it’s just been such a pleasure working with you so closely. We weren’t always on the same page, but we were definitely writing the same novel with the same outcome to improve the quality of education for our students and staff. So I do know this for sure because of both of you, that our district is in a much better place, and I am certainly a much better superintendent because of my relationship with both of you, so thank you.
Well, I guess this is our last meeting, Howard, right? It is December, correct?
Unless I need this on Friday, but I’m not planning on it.
Okay. I’m not clowning on it either. We are going to talk about future board meetings. 13A, Organizational Board Meeting, Tuesday, December 11th at 5:00 p.m. right here. We welcome Rochelle Marcus and Tristan Walker Schuman. We welcome Rochelle Marcus and Tristan Walker Schuman. And that will be right here. And then on December 13th, they will have a study session, study session budget on Thursday, December 13th at 1:00 p.m. in the District Office Boardroom. Then a special board meeting, you folks are busy, December 13th at 1:30 in the District Office Boardroom. And then a regular board meeting on January 15th at 5:00 p.m. right here. So with that, I want to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. And since I won't be able to wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, I'm going to wish it to you now. Merry everything, happy everything, and have a blessed and prosperous New Year. Thank you.